Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. We're gonna go ahead and get this meeting started. If everybody can please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Ready, begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, a nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Okay, our next item is, are there any changes to the agenda?
I have none. I just wanna point out that we have two agendas, so there's a special meeting that can run concurrent with the regular meeting. It has one closed session item for us to add, and then another discussion item, so if we could add that discussion item as 6.3 on the regular agenda.
Any other changes? We have a motion to approve. The agenda is read with the changes.
I motion to approve the agenda.
I'll second it.
Roll call, please.
Councilman Schindler?
Aye.
Councilman Hedgecock?
Aye.
Councilman Vosberg?
Aye.
Mayor Protem Ramirez? Mayor Horn?
And I vote aye. Okay, we'll move on to our next item. Awards, presentations, appointments, and proclamations. We have one item tonight from the police department's 2023 annual report.
Well, good evening, mayor, council, city manager, staff, and community. This is gonna be an overview of our 2023 annual report. Council, in my first annual report in 2022, these overarching goals: lead and build the department, reduce crime, and build community trust. We created to update the department's direction, problem-solving strategies used to reduce crime, and strategies to enhance community trust. I'd like to start off by our efforts in reducing crime. I'm proud to announce that we ended 2023 with a reduction of crime by 15% compared to an increase of 17% of crime at the end of 2022. And the 15% decrease equates to 49 less people victimized in our city. If I could bring your attention, I got this little pointer, I'm not sure it's working. On the year-to-date, starting with homicide, we had zero. I believe the last homicide the city of Kalinga had was in September 10th of 2020. We did have a slight increase of rapes. We had three in 2023 compared to four. And when it comes to robberies, we had a decrease of 50%. We only had three for 2023. And assaults, we had 15% decrease, 141. Of the 141, 44 was domestic violence assaults. And as you see here, we had a huge significant decrease of 67%. We had 18 burglaries in 2023 compared to 55 in 2022. We had a slight increase of larcenies by 6%, and we almost doubled the increase of auto thefts, but we had 80%. We had 18 compared to 10. As you've seen here in this roll here, the victim, we had 276 victims compared in 2023 compared to 325. One of the strategies we use to reduce crime is the technologies of video cameras. In 2023, we completed Phase Two of Five of our Community Video Policing Program, which involves installation of surveillance cameras and license plate captures at 10 specific locations in the city. These cameras and license plate captures have already had a positive impact in aiding the department in investigations. It's kinda hard to see there, but each of these cameras do have the location of where they're at. And our next slide, lead and build the department. Our sub-goal for 2023 was to hire additional officers. At the end of 2023, we had 19 sworn officers positions filled, which the ratio of officers was 1.3 sworn officers per 1,000, thanks to the city manager and your support council, and the funding of 1.74 million from the BSEC organized retail theft. We will fund, which will fund, two additional officers through 2027 and help complete Phase Six of our Community Video Policing Program by adding additional 36 cameras and license plate captures at specific locations in the city. The two additional sworn officer positions will allow the department to have 24 sworn officers, a staffing level of sworn officers never seen in the city of Kalinga, which will bring the ratio of officers to 1.7 per 1,000, a ratio we want to remain in order to optimize police services, increase productivity, and enhance community and police partnership. As to build community trust, our goal was to create a chief advisory board. And on August 30th, the department hosted the first Police Chief Advisory Board meeting, which is comprised with council district representatives, school officials, managers, business owners, and community members. The purpose of the board is to provide feedback on proposed police programs and policies, priorities, along with being a sounding board for the department and how we can address issues of concerns and improve our services. In addition, the council's committees on animal control and beautification were added to the, under the umbrella of the Chief Advisory Board. These are our sub-goals for our 2024. Under lead and build the department, our goal is to fill those vacancies, positions, and meet the 24 sworn officers. And by that, we'll be able to increase our patrol staffing along with creating a detective unit that's gonna be working specifically on the grant, the organized retail theft grant. Under reduce crime is to complete the Phase Six of installing 36 cameras and implement the first year of the organized retail theft grant, which includes developing, implementing, and evaluation plan of process and outcome measures specifically to the goals of the grant, and to form a coalition of retailers and installing 50 hide, lock, take vehicle theft prevention signs in retailer parking lots. And under build community trust, it's to address the Police Chief's Advisory Board's concerns, such as increased traffic safety around the schools, especially in the morning, decrease the number of vehicles and off-road vehicle speeding on city streets, decrease homelessness trespassing on private property, and increase proactive patrolling. In closing, the reduction of crime and accomplishments we have had in 2023 could not be possible without the hard work of the men and women of the Kalinga Police Department and the support of the community and you. Thank you. Any questions?
Thanks, chief.
Thanks. Appreciate that. That was well thought out, and it's nice to see crime going down. I appreciate all your hard work and all the hard work of our department.
Thank you.
Thank you, chief. Okay, we'll move on to our next item, number three, citizens' comments. This section of the agenda allows members of the public to address the city council on any item within the jurisdiction of the council. Members of the public, when recognized by the mayor, should come forward to the lectern, identify themselves, and use the microphone. Comments are normally limited to three minutes in accordance with state open meeting laws. No actions will be taken by the city council this evening, and all items will be referred to staff for a follow-up and a report. Citizens' comments submitted in writing by the city clerk by 5:00 PM on the day of the city council meeting shall be distributed to the city council and included in the record, however, they will not be read. We have anybody who would like to comment?
Hi, my name is Wendy. I live in District Four. I'm a community leader of the Kalinga Tenants United Citywide Tenants Union, and I am a Peppery Association member. We was given a rent increase letter on January 12th, 2024, stating that our rent will be increased as of March 1, 2024, with a 30-day notice. My rent is 9.25 a month. They wanted to increase it to 10.35. The increase, that increase is 10.6% with only a 30-day notice. The law says that it, we, if we get an increase more than 10%, we should have a 60-day notice. On February 1, 2024, it was changed. The law says now that rent cannot be increased more than 10% in a 12-month time. AB 1482 is a Tenant Protection Act of 2019. It says California municipalities may not increase rent by more than 5% plus the percentage increase of CPI during a 12-month period at a maximum of 10%. Our increase was 10%, 10.6%. We are living in uninhabitable conditions. Our landlord is responsible for dwelling structures, windows and doors, water, HVAC equipment, gas lines, and fixtures, plumbing and sanitation, trash cans, and garbage removal, stairs and railings, fire exits, smoke detectors, a locking mailbox, a phone jack wiring, and disclosures of hazardous materials and mold and bedbugs and pest control. We have the right to working electricity, working doors and windows, working plumbing and water heaters that work. We have roofs that leak, and none of the above. How can a person live in a place that, like this, and be asked for more rent? I came to your last meeting asking you for the same things I am still asking you for now. We need tenant protections, including rent control and rent control boards in the city of Kalinga. City needs to implement ordinances and stick to those implemented ordinances that start protecting its tenants here in Kalinga and including a true residential inspection service and hold its landlords, property managers, and owners accountable for the habituality issues throughout the county's receivership programs and anti-displacement programs that prevent displacement, but supports relocation, cost burdens, and rent control so that illegal increases like what we are facing at Peppery does not continue. I did some research, and you already have some of those ordinances in place, but do not or have not held people accountable for not following them. I am grateful that I've had this opportunity to speak here again. Thank you. Please do not take this lightly. We need the city to step up and do what is right for its renters here in Kalinga. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Is there anyone else? Counsel? Okay. Seeing there's no more, we'll go ahead and move on to our next item. Public hearings, we have none tonight. Item number five, consent calendar. We have eight items tonight. What would counsel like to do? Do we have any changes, or is there a motion?
I'd like to, just to pull 5.5 for clarification.
Any other items, counsel? None. Okay, we'll move on to 5.5.
Sorry, did you have a specific question about it?
Um, yeah, well, I just wanna know if they signed.
Yes, so we don't generally put contracts on the council agenda until the other party has approved it. So we do have a copy of the contract signed by Gimme Love attached, but there is a handwritten note on it. I don't know, Larry, if you can pull it up on the screen there for 5.5 under the attachment. There should be two, and it's the one that says "signed", and it's roughly on the third page, maybe, if you scroll through it. So basically, what they've stated is they have more cats in the shelter currently than what the contract allows, but that's because they're sick, so they can't get them out. So they made a handwritten note that they will not be in compliance temporarily with the cap on cats just because of the illness, and once they're ready to be moved out, they will. It's, there it is.
All right. Well, also, I just wanted to make it apparent for the public that a lot of times when we go over the consent calendar, a lot of things don't stick out. And I would've thought we would've had a packed house full of people happy that this contract was signed. I mean, seriously, where's everybody at in like praise of the city, you know, and Gimme Love being able to come to an agreement? I think that's amazing. And I just wanna let everyone know that, you know, that maybe watching, that, you know, this took a lot of hard work on everyone's part, and the agreement was signed, and I think we're gonna approve it tonight, so that's good news. That's it. That's all I have.
They give you, did they give a rough date on how long it was gonna take for the sick animals, roughly 30 days, 60 days?
No, it's just until they're healthy enough to be moved out.
Okay, we have a motion to approve the consent calendar.
I make the motion to approve this consent calendar.
I'll second.
Roll call, please.
Councilman Vosberg?
Aye.
Councilman Schindler?
Aye.
Councilman Hedgecock?
Aye.
Mayor Horn?
And I vote aye. Okay, we'll move on to the next item. We have item number six. We have three items tonight. Ordinance, presentation, discussion, and potential action items. The first one is discussion, direction, and potential action regarding Measure J renewal. Marissa.
Thank you. So this item's placed on the agenda as a discussion item to seek further direction from council regarding an extension of Measure J. So Measure J was approved by the voters. It had a 10-year sunset. And previously, this was added as an agenda item. I have the date in the staff report, but the direction from council at that time was to consider adding it to the November 2024 election. And so we just need direction, if that's what you would like to do, so that we can move forward with that. I do have additional information about Measure J, if you want me to go over it, if people aren't familiar with it. You want me to do that? Okay. So on June 14th, 2018, Kalinga City Council adopted Resolution Number 3820, calling for a municipal election to submit to the voters a local ballot measure adopting a 1% transaction and use tax, which is just a fancy name for a sales tax. And that was to fund Kalinga city services, including police and fire protection and other general services, and requesting the Board of Supervisors of Fresno County to consolidate a municipal election on a local measure with other elections to be held on November 6th, 2018. This 1% sales tax measure became known as Measure J. On September 20th, 2018, the Kalinga City Council adopted Resolution Number 3862, providing a declaration of intent for expenditures related to Measure J revenues, and those were as follows: to hire three additional firefighter paramedics; to reinstate the 10 reserve firefighter positions; to hire two additional police officers; to reactivate the police investigations unit; to make upgrades to the city's emergency command center; to hire additional public safety personnel; to purchase a building-wide uninterruptible power supply; to pay fair wages to employees; to hire a deputy fire chief; to improve recruitment, retention, and employee morale; and to institute a financial reserve. These priorities were to be addressed within the 10-year timeframe of Measure J. All have been accomplished as written or by a variation. On November 6th, 2018, Measure J was passed. The 1% sales tax went into effect April 1st, 2019, and sunsets on April 1st, 2029. On September 1st, 2022, council discussed the Measure J renewal. And at that time, Councilman Adkinson spoke in support of renewing Measure J for an additional 10-year period. It was too late to place the measure on the 2022 ballot, but he asked to have it brought back to be added to the 2024 election ballot, and this was the consensus of the council at the time. So I just need direction, if that's what you'd like us to do. There's some paperwork that Shannon would need to get ready to get to the elections office, and we would need to move forward with getting it added for the November election. It is staff's recommendation that you do. If Measure J were to sunset in 2029 and go away, we would have a major loss of revenue to the city and a loss of all the positions that it's funded, which are primarily public safety.
So I have a question. How much has Measure J brought in each year? Do you have that information?
I don't have it with me. I don't know if Mai has it off the top of her head, cuz she was just recently working on the mid-year budget review. I think when we adopted, when we passed it, it was expected to bring in $1 million, and that was our conservative number, and it's exceeded that annually, but Mai may be able to pull up the exact number.
Yeah, you're right. It wasn't a million, and it was more, a lot more. And I'm fully in favor of putting it up sooner than later because you never know what's gonna happen in the economy, and you never know. Right now, you know, we're doing the police and fire, doing a really great job in increasing their numbers, and the only way that we're gonna be able to do that is to continue with that. There's no, you know, we've went rounds on cuts, you know, lots of different times. I've been involved for the last probably eight years at all the budget meetings, trying to figure out what can we can cut and what we can do to make our money go farther. And it took a lot for me to come around and support, you know, the Measure J. But nobody's gonna help us here in Kalinga. Nobody's coming to help us. We don't have the access to the sheriffs like the cities closer to Fresno do. We do luckily have access to the state hospital and the prison that we have agreements with. That's a great thing. But we really need to, if we wanna be safe, and you've seen the numbers up there, they've been doing a great job. I appreciate that, chief. Just a suggestion that I have is that maybe you bring back a list that modifies that list because some of those things on that list beforehand have changed. And I think it should be, we should have a session on just discussing what does that look like moving forward. And I think, you know, my personal opinion would be towards public safety. We make the list towards that, and then continue on with making sure that we have competitive wages. But I think we should have a meeting, we should have an item about that, so the public can come in, discuss, hear what's going on, and then also that we, if we do decide to move forward with this, that we also move forward with the informational that we pushed out to the public last time, to make sure that the public is well-informed.
Right. So if you are interested in doing this, what would happen is at either the next city council meeting or possibly the one after that, there would be a resolution that you would vote on to actually direct staff to place it on the ballot. And then we would have an item that Councilman Vosberg's requesting, which would be another resolution where we would declare the priorities and the spending plan so that the public would know how the money would be spent, and that's what we did the last time. So some of the things that were on the list were one-time costs, like the enhancements to the emergency command center and the uninterrupted supply of electricity. So those things, that money is no longer needed for those items because those were one-time expenses, so there are other things that we can do with the additional money. The bodies are what they are. I mean, the staff that we fund with that is going to be an ongoing cost, but some of those projects were just one-time expenses.
And I know people are probably thinking, well, it doesn't expire till 2029. Well, why would you, you know, do it now, right? I'm sure people are wondering that. Well, because sometimes these things fail, and sometimes you need to go back to the drawing board and come back to the public and ask the public what they were happy about, what they weren't happy about, what they'd like to see added, if there's things that the city can do to modify perspective on it, and then it could be tried again. Because if we don't keep that measure in place, we're looking at epic cuts to public safety. There will be no other choices. And this isn't a scare tactic, it's just the reality of the truth because of how much money, you know, it costs to fund those positions, so.
Can we also check and see what it would take to possibly set it, if we do renew it, to where there is no sunset? Is that possible to do?
Yeah, certainly. So as the council considers this, that's, that was my, gonna be my comment to you guys is you need to decide when you, if you want it to sunset, what date would that be? Would it be 10 years from now, 10 years from the original expiration? Or do you want it to expire at all? Cuz it's basically the same process. Cuz we're gonna be modifying the current sunset date, and either we're gonna modify it somehow by adding years on or we're just gonna eliminate it. So that's something that council needs to decide. So since I was on when Measure P was, that was one of those times where it failed. And the modification was putting the sunset in, that we listened to the public, and that was one of the things the public wanted. And that was one of the, but I think we should poll the public if there's a way to find out, to get out to them and find out if they're interested in a sunset or if they're interested in saying, hey, this is something that for the foreseeable future, we're gonna need this. But we should definitely keep the public involved. That way, the, what the majority of the public wants, we move forward with. That way, we don't spend money twice. Just my suggestion. The only, the only complication is that is that we can't put it on until you decide whatever that is gonna be because we have to present to you the language and then give that language to the county to say this is what the ballot measure's gonna actually say. Well, I can tell you that I just remember last time, the Measure P, a lot of, a lot of people blamed it on the state hospital situation. I believe that was one of the deals there. But a lot of people in town did say that they didn't vote for it cuz it didn't have a sunset. And that was one of the things. Is there any way we could have like a public workshop in between Point A and B and bring people and put it out to the paper and things like that? Cuz I really think it's important we keep the public involved. We need their buy-in for this, if they're interested in this. And always, this is a decision of the public to decide what kind of service this is a decision of the public, to decide what kind of services they're interested in. If you're interested in keeping the services as they are now, or in getting better services, then we're going to need to continue this. If you're, that's not of interest to the public, then, well, it won't, I don't think it'll look good, but that's not only my decision, so. That's the voters, so we'll see how that goes. But I would say that we at least have some kind of formal or informal workshop where we can bring the public in and kind of ask their opinion, before that we do that, if that's what's needed.
What's, what's the deadline before we have to have this set to possibly go on ballot?
The deadline is probably not until like May or June, but it's a lot of steps that we have to take before we can get there. And so, we may not have time to do an actual poll. We would have time to do a workshop and bring the public in. Unfortunately, when we host public workshops, we don't get very much participation. But it's worth doing to see if we can get people to come in. It is true, what Councilman Vosberg stated, that we did run it before, and it did not pass. And then when we added the sunset, people voted in favor of it, and it passed. But one thing, another thing to consider is that it costs every time we put it on the ballot to vote. It's not a huge expense. It depends, and I can't even give you a quote, because it depends on how many things are on the Fresno County ballot, but it could cost us anywhere from like $12,000 to $60,000. And so, if the public was aware that they're paying that every 10 years that we put it on, or however often we're going to put it on, they may vote in favor of it not having a sunset just to save that money, or they may not vote in favor of it, because they don't want something that goes indefinitely.
Well, and that's the other benefit of voting on a general election year, is because a lot of people put a lot of items on, so that is shared throughout the, throughout the time. And so, you know, sometimes like Measure E, which is going to be talked about in just a little while, they decided to do their little trial run in a non-general election, which cost them a bit of money, but the person that was doing it had unlimited funds, so no big deal. But the city not having those funds, I would suggest, you know, the general election, and hopefully get it done on the first try, whatever the will is of the council and the, and the voters and the public.
Yeah, I agree. I don't see any point in waiting. Better to get it all taken care of now, so we're ahead of the game.
So the direction of the council is to host a public workshop, and then from there, we will have the input from the public to draft a resolution on whether it's going to have a sunset or not?
Any more on Measure J? Okay, we'll move on to our second item.
I think Mai has the number.
Mai has the number. For the past two years, we've been receiving 2.2 million.
Each year?
Each year.
So, just for clarification, that's money that's going into our budget, that's causing us to be black. And if we didn't have that money, we'd be in the red, with current service levels.
That's the highest sales tax that we receive.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Okay, we'll move on to item number two, presentation of the City of Colinga Traffic Signal Warrant Counts Analysis for Jane Avenue at Willow Springs, Juniper Ridge, and Enterprise Parkway. Sean.
Thank you. Mayor and council, at the request of the council, staff had JK Consulting Group perform a traffic warrant counts analysis in the City of Colinga. The project area was bound by Willow Springs Avenue to the west and Enterprise Parkway to the east along State Route 33, which is Jane Avenue. A copy of the report's been provided in the, in the staff report as well, for the council's review. And so, there were 12, my screen went off here. The requirement and objectives of the California Department of Transportation, California Manual on Uniform Traffic Control Devices, were followed in preparation of this analysis. Warrants one, there were three different warrants for eight-hour vehicular volume, four-hour vehicular volume, and then peak hour volume. And from Chapter 4C, Traffic Control Signal Needs Studies, they were utilized to determine if a traffic signal is warranted at the study areas, or the intersections below. So, oh, thank you, Larry. So I won't explain the two, the three different locations, but it's Willow Springs, Juniper Ridge Boulevard, and Enterprise Parkway. The evaluation shows that warrants one, two, and three, which is the eight-hour volume, the four-hour volume, and the peak hour volume, are not satisfied for any of the study intersections, considering existing traffic volumes. It should be noted that the Traffic Control Signal Needs Studies are guidelines used to aid in determining traffic control device needs in various scenarios. So based on the report we received, is it, the numbers, the volumes are not warranted for a traffic signal at any of those locations. This is something similar that Caltrans may perform. It's a standard practice to utilize these guidelines when determining traffic warrants for certain intersections. So with that, if there's any questions, I'd be more than happy to answer them. Unfortunately, the gentleman from JK was unable to make it tonight, but if there's any other further follow-up questions, I'd be more than happy to get those for you guys.
So, this kind of baffles me, because we have a stop sign coming, a stoplight coming into town, right next to Poste Chanay. An area where one side of the road is not, doesn't have any activity, and the other side has a small suburb. And then, in this area, so I don't know how they were able to use numbers, because there's no state hospital out there, there's no prison out there, there's nothing except for people going to Fresno or Hanford going that direction. And then on the other side, we have the state hospital, we have the prison, we have people that are going to Hanford, that are going to Huron, that are doing the same amount of outward traveling, I believe, and increased traffic with the, with the establishments are there, coming back into town, with van pools and things like that. And as far as I know, the fog, if it does affect us, affects us on that side of town, and not so much where the hills are. And I know, from past, just thinking of it, that I know at least two or three head-on collisions have happened there, where they've been complete fatalities. One of them, and has involved a former state employee that was out there, I think he was like captain. And he felt horrible, but he couldn't see. And people were going real fast. And what happens to all the people that are trying to get in and out of all those different areas, when it's foggy, or when the people coming into town are going super fast, or leaving, trying to get to work, going super fast, and these people can't get out, or they have to try and judge how much time it takes to get to point A to point B. So, my idea is, is that just because traffic itself doesn't warrant, if they're saying it doesn't warrant it, I'm baffled to understand how it warranted it on coming into Poste Chanay. That's what I wonder. How is that? And so what I'd like to do is to have the city reach out to Caltrans, and further investigate this. And I will also call Caltrans, maybe the mayor can get involved, he can go, and we can, because not everything they do comes upon stats like this. Sometimes it comes upon need, like as in, you know, hey, we have issues here that are social issues, where, and issues of safety. And those safety issues, like certain places where we get a stoplight or a stop sign, where you would think to yourself, hey, this isn't, like, for instance, we put a stop sign over there on Monterey Street. The traffic there is minimal. But what happens? People take off like, super fast. Like, it's a thoroughfare, and we put a stop sign in there. So I think they should do the same thing for us. And, you know, it protects the residents out there, which is quite a bit of people. So, if it would be the will of the council, if we could just do some more investigation work with Caltrans, and trying to see what we couldn't do, and work with COG, to see if there's any transportation dollars to try and, and get that funded. How close were the numbers to the required numbers?
I couldn't tell you. I'd have to, I'd have to verify with the consulting firm to find out how close they were. Because there is an 80% and 100% satisfied, and both of them were marked as no, so I'd imagine it's under 80%. Because they have minimum vehicle volume, 100% satisfied, 80% volume satisfied, and all of them were, were marked no. So there's still at least a 20% deficit in terms of meeting those volumes.
I know for a fact that the, in the past, the CHP, because it's a highway, have been out there running speed enforcement on that, when it's been requested. So maybe that's something we approach also, to help that, that area.
Yeah. So whatever the council would like, staff can definitely reach out to Caltrans, if that's still something you'd like to entertain. You know, I agree, it is an analysis, so there are, there are things that, of different conversations we can have with Caltrans, in terms of community need, to see if there's some other way that might be able to warrant a signal. Because ultimately, on the state highway, it's going to be up to Caltrans. And so, they may want us to do different things. There are traffic count numbers that we have now, so we can still always bring this to Caltrans and say, hey, these are the, these are the traffic count numbers, and we can see what Caltrans says as well. So this isn't saying, no, it can't happen.
Yeah.
But Caltrans ultimately is the one that has to, similar to what we did with Cambridge and Elm.
Well, and we, they can also maybe take into consideration that we're going to have a trail there, a walking trail. So now you're going to be encouraging pedestrians to walk on that road coming in from, from Sandalwood into town. And so, that may change, you know, a couple of different things as well. Maybe that, all these things together, just like you say, I mean, it's not going to cost us any further money than this, to just try and reach out and see, you know, what we can do. And I just think that the safety of the public, since they're asking, I think, you know, this was brought to me, I think, by Mr. Allison, and he's in the audience, and he's had quite a large group of people over there that are interested in this, and so, and it's my district, so I figure I might as well, you know, be the fighter for it.
Yeah, we can reach out to Caltrans if the council would like.
If that's the will of the council.
Yeah, I'd like that.
Okay.
I just wanted to add something, and I'm sure probably most of the council know, but Sean could verify. Caltrans is really hesitant right now to put in stop signs anywhere. So what they would rather, much rather do is roundabout. That's just, that's just the way, that's just the way they've been going. And so they may come back, and you, you may see that. That's an option.
And this, and this district is very big on roundabouts.
You know, I was really against roundabouts, and I fought Caltrans in COG about roundabouts. And I will have to tell you that I am a supporter of roundabouts, because it slows the traffic down, but controls it. And once you get to know them, it actually works pretty well, just like the one coming in to the Costco off the 43, is it the 43?
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah. No, that's great. And you can just keep going, choose which way you want to go. Now granted, not everyone's going to be in favor of those, so. But, anything you could do. And in the meantime, if it would be okay with council, if maybe we could get at least one of our speed trailers out there, maybe, just to kind of slow people down, when they're coming into town.
Didn't we add that to the app?
I was just going to say that. So we did add, just to plug that, yes. We did add some additional features on the app, because we have been receiving calls regarding certain neighborhoods, certain areas, that have speeding issues. If you do, you can identify it on the app, and then we can communicate with the police department, and we can try and get speed trailers out there to start analyzing excessive speed in certain areas. Because they don't always get, they're not always out, but we definitely don't mind bringing them out when there's, if we have some concerned citizens of excessive speeding in certain neighborhoods. So, just find it on the app and identify it, and we'll definitely follow up with you.
I'll do that. I appreciate it, Sean.
Any more questions? Thank you, Sean. Okay, we'll move on to our third item, Adopt Resolution Number 4199, opposing Fresno State's 0.25% sales tax for Measure E. Marissa.
Thank you. So this item was requested as a future agenda item by Councilman Vosberg. There is a resolution attached, and I'll just highlight some of the language in there. The resolution states that the City Council of the City of Colinga is not in favor of imposing a tax increase on Colinga citizens to cover a responsibility of the state of California to maintain adequate state university programs and facilities. The City Council of the City of Colinga is not in support of a seven-member committee appointed by Fresno County Supervisors, the Fresno State President, and the CSU Chancellor to be paid up to $81,000 per year, per committee member, to attend three meetings per year, and choose how to disperse Measure E sales tax money. The City Council of the City of Colinga believes Measure E lacks spending guardrails. The City Council of the City of Colinga feels Measure E lacks community input, and the City Council of the City of Colinga cannot support a sales tax measure that will specifically be paid by Fresno County residents, including Colinga citizens, when only a small percentage of Colinga citizens attend California State University Fresno. Therefore, the City Council of the City of Colinga opposes levying a 0.25% countywide sales tax, as proposed by Measure E, the California State University Fresno Programs and Facilities Sales Tax Initiative. You can discuss it if you'd like, but that's the basic language of the resolution. If you support opposing it, and would like to vote in favor of opposing Measure E.
So, there's a lot to unpack on Measure E. I'm not going to waste everyone's complete time on this, but we have a major developer, Spencer, that decided that this was a great idea to run. It failed the first time it ran, and then the 81,000 was put in to put people on the board, and now you have these politicians that have decided to back this. That's a very interesting thing. I wasn't for the first version, because I knew that what happened last time, that Spencer supported and financed a bond, was that, and you can read up on this in the Fresno V, he got all of the no-bid contracts. So, yeah, no, I don't support that at all. And it's going to, it could lead to that exact same thing this time. And, you know, they reframed it, and they're sending out flyers to everyone that says this keeps your mo, that your, your money local. No, it does not keep your money local. It goes to Fresno. Fresno will be the beneficiary of these tax dollars. When they build their new programs over there, it's going to entice people to go, more people to leave small towns and go to Fresno. And when they do, when they spend their money over there for going to these projects and services that are in Fresno, they're going to reap the benefits, not Colinga. If we were going to vote on 2.5, 0.25% tax, or whatever that is, you know, I think it should go for Colinga citizens for projects that we have here. You know, we could use a nursing program, but here's the deal. Those nurses, even if they do a nursing program over there, oh, and this is, from what I understand, it's a general tax, right?
Correct.
Which means they don't actually have to follow the rules. Now, I understand that our Measure J is the same kind of tax. Well, we actually did what we said we were going to do, and I think that that's the proof in the pudding. But, on their tax, a lot of that money, when they spend it, and those nurses are, are done, there's no proof that says that they're going to stay here. And to be honest with you, why would they? Everything in California is very, if you can get the education here, and then leave and go somewhere else, that seems to be the thing of, of things happening nowadays. So I don't want our taxes to fund positions for people to be able to teach, and people to be able to get positions, because they went to school, and then those people leave and go somewhere else, off of the backs of our taxpayers. And so, this whole thing just doesn't sound like a good idea. If they would have reached out to Colinga and said, hey, we'll build a satellite campus in, in the rural cities, that would have been a starter. That would have been like, hey, you guys are reaching out to us, and you're going to work with West Hills College to build, you know, which, they could do that, but that, that wasn't on the list of things for them. And so, for me, and I really want to explain this, because I want people to understand at home, that maybe not here right now, this might be put in the paper, to understand the reasoning of why I'm in support of, of opposing E, is because of all these different things that go along with it. The potential for corruption, the tax money not staying locally, and the fact that, in the past, the same person who financed this by themselves got no-bid contracts. And so, all of that together, to me, and I can just tell you that I, I watched the campaign finance trail, and most of the money that's been raised by this have been by machine and builders. And I think within the last, like, three or four days, late finance reports have been given in, and I believe it's over a million dollars, by like, two different people investing into this. Small people, small people like me and you are not investing into this. This is something that is being pushed forward by big business and big money. So I hope the council says no to Measure E.
One of the things he didn't mention in there was the numbers. This measure right here is going to pull anywhere from 1.5 to $2 billion, just for this measure right here, to go to one school. And we're all, every, everybody, every city in Fresno County will have to cover it, even if they don't utilize it. So it's, it's an extra expense. I know most people right now, most citizens can't afford. So, with that being said, I'm against it, too.
I agree with everything Mr. Vosberg said. This is not good for any of us, here in Colinga. I'm against it.
May as well. If it's not benefiting our city, it's, they don't need to take our money, for sure.
So we can go ahead and, we can actually vote on this right now? Okay. I'll make a motion to oppose this adoption.
I'll second.
Roll call, please.
Mayor Horn?
Aye.
Councilman Vosberg?
Aye.
Councilman Hedgecock?
Aye.
Councilman Schindler?
Aye.
Okay, we'll move on to item number seven, announcements, city manager's announcements.
So I wanna let everyone know that, starting tomorrow morning, City Hall and the Police Department are going to be tented for termite fumigation. So, the Police Department's gonna temporarily relocate over to the Fire Department, and Fresno County Sheriff's Office will temporarily answer nine-one-one calls. And Monday's a holiday, so Monday they should remove the tent, and then everything should be back to normal business on Tuesday. And then Sean has an exciting announcement.
Thank you. So every two years, we apply for grants through Fresno Council of Governments. We find, you hear the acronym CMAC and STPG, and then they also have a new carb, carbon reduction program, which is a little convoluted sometimes, in terms of the types of projects, but we got creative and found a project that we felt would be necessary to apply for. So under the CMAC program, which is the Congestion Mitigation Air Quality Grant, we've been, in the past, applying for trail segments, and trying to finalize, finish our trail system. So we were awarded nine hundred and thirty-five thousand dollars for Segment Six of our trail, which actually we've enhanced the trail a little bit, as we've learned through the segments. This will include solar lighting as well, so there'll be some sporadic solar lighting along this segment. And this segment is basically from Polk Street, north, to the Gregory, kinda that new bridge tie-in, on the north side of town. So that'll be all along the Creek Corridor there, through the school farm, and then all the way north to near Gregory, where the trailer park is. And it'll tie into the other funded trail systems as going west. In terms of the, the STPG, which is the Surface Transportation Block Grant Program, we received one point oh-eight million dollars to repave California Street, from Cambridge all the way to Washington. And to finish the small amount of Baker Street, that wasn't completed, is part of the ATP Three Project, where we did a lot of the, the bulb bouts, and safe route to school enhancements, this is probably a couple of years ago. And so, these proj, and then, lastly, the, under the Carb Reduction Program, we, we put together a project that would essentially modernize the signal, the signalized intersection at Polk and Forest, because as you may or may not know, that's the signalization, that's the signal that the city maintains and operates, it's not on the state highway system. So we'll be modernizing that with new crossing indicators, the ones that kinda talk to you, and, as well as all the signal lights, that'll be replaced, as well as the technology on that signal. And that also includes, we worked with PG&E, on retrofitting all existing, what they call high-pressure sodium, the orange kind of looking lights, from the high-pressure sodium to LED. And if you noticed, most of the lights in town have been converted to LED, however, a lot of the decoratives are not, not all of the decoratives that are on Elm were not, because of the, the whole head has to be replaced. And so, we worked with PG&E, they agreed to retrofitting those, and so we're working with PG&E, and we have funding now to retrofit those to LED as well. So we'll have all those lights, LED, and converted. Because there were some that were not converted, that includes all the city lights that we own, that are currently not LED, we'll be converting those as well, in the amount of five hundred and fifty-two thousand dollars. So all in all, we found all this out yesterday, which was exciting. So, these projects take a while, as you know, with federal and state projects, these will probably start, probably within a year or so, in terms of the preliminary engineering phase and environmental. But we are starting to hit some strides on previous projects, you know, we're in ATP Seven, and we are gonna be starting construction on ATP Four, hopefully this year, so, it takes a while to go through this, but I appreciate everyone's patience, but it's good, good exciting news to keep the ball rolling, so, you'll see these projects in the future.
Thank you, Sean. Any councilman's announcements, reports? None? Okay, move on to, and I have none as well. Any future agenda items?
I just have one. We've had the representative from the, for the housing group come twice, and I've worked with Marissa on, in the past, in creating kind of a list of things that the city provides services, and what is a tenant law, that the tenants have to pursue on their own. And so maybe if we could work on getting that list to her, that way that she could understand, does she already have it?
I'm not sure if she already has it. She's not ever left her contact information, so I don't know if anyone in the audience knows her, or anyone on the council, but if you could get us her contact info, that would help.
Yeah, we could do that, if, but that way that, you know, there's certain things the city can do, and there's certain things that are tenant law specific, and, you know, I've, I heard rent control discussed. I can tell you that, I'm taking public administration class, and the first one I had to take was on econ, and rent control actually creates shortages, which actually causes rent to skyrocket. Just my opinion, it's usually not a good idea. I'm not the, the just of council making the decision on that, but, just to put that out there, I mean, it was econ one-on-one. I think that a lot of these issues that they're having could be solved with finding out which state agency that they need to report their people to. So if there's someone who's charging more than the five percent, plus the CPI increase, which I think the CPI this year was what, three percent? I think it was around three, so if they're getting charged ten, it might be a little bit excessive, but there's gotta be someone to report to. So if you could find that information out, and, and give it to her, that way that she would have it.
No? Okay, we'll move on to closed session, we have two items tonight. That being said, meeting is adjourned.